Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the regular council meeting for December fourteenth. It's five o'clock. I'd like to call a meeting to order. Adoption of the agenda. Resolve that council adopt the agenda as presented with the addition of the following items. Approval approval of accounts six point one, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one, check detail report. Correspondence for action eight point three Red River Basin Commission Annual Conference. January eleventh, thirteenth, twenty twenty two in Grand Forks, and there's an in in camera item twelve point five. Wasteful ground operator contract. Have a mover, please. Move by Council Paul, seconder. Counsel Garvey, any additions to the agenda? Uh, Counsel Paul.
Hi, John. That email I sent around, or I think it was, or the DJ sent around yesterday in regards to the COVID vaccination policy. Do I have to motion that now or motion that when we get to it?
When we get to it.
Perfect thing.
Okay, anything further? Counsel Garvey, you had your hand up, and Mayor Sewell. Counsel, Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to add mayor's statement. Uh, which will be at the start of the regular council meeting after planning. And under new business, uh, just a short comments on governance.
Okay, uh, new business. What item is that here?
It'll be eleven point six.
Just a long way to scroll through. Eleven point six. Okay, please remind me when when we get there, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Counsel Hunt, uh, oh, actually, uh, all in favor of the of the changes? That is carried. Thank you very much. Counsel Hunt is not with us tonight. He is recovering from surgery. And we, uh, he is recovering, uh, good, and, uh, we wish him good luck in the rest of his recovery. That being said, there's only six of us on on council here tonight, so in, uh, in the event that we have a three-all tie. That motion will be, uh, will be considered defeated because it, uh, it very well could happen, but I want to let you know, I, uh, let everyone know before we get into the meeting. So with that said, we will start with a planning and related delegations. And we'll open the public hearings. Be it resolve that council hereby open the public hearings for the following, uh, planning application scheduled for December fourteenth, twenty twenty one at five P M. Conditional use number thirty-four, twenty twenty-one. Variation order one twelve, twenty twenty-one. Variation order number one twenty-one, twenty twenty-one. Subdivision number S twenty-one, twenty-nine, twenty-five. Subdivision S twenty-one, twenty-nine, twenty-seven. Can I have a mover, please? Move by Counsel Price, and seconder. Counsel Paul, all in favor? That is carried. And let us start with the conditional use applications. Uh, Mr. Gil, please proceed.
Thank you much, Mr. Chair.
Oh, uh, hang on a second, Tim.
Should I bring Jennifer into the meeting at this point?
Yes, please.
She's being admitted.
Okay, Lisa.
There might be the applicant as well under the phone number I gave you. They should be admitted as well so they can hear everything.
Okay.
Not in the waiting room.
Okay, um, are they are they all in the, uh? Are they all in the, uh, in the waiting room now? Or are they, have you taken them out, those that are for the first hearing?
Uh, Jennifer is in the meeting. Is she in the meeting? The thing's just jostled, dummy. There she is. Uh, yeah, Jennifer's in the meeting. Uh, and I don't see, uh, the Gees bricks, uh, their phone number in the waiting room unless they're calling in on a different number. And I'll just check the other item, other numbers in the list to see if it's, they might be under a different number here. Uh, no, they're not in the waiting room.
Okay, so we will start then with, uh, with Mr. With, uh, yes, Deputy Mayor Hoby.
Uh, I don't know if anybody saw, but, um, Jennifer Lim, I believe the last name is, she's asking to get, um, to show her presentation.
Yeah, she will, once, once the, uh, once the planner has, uh, has gone through his red, uh, gone through his presentation questions. And then we will ask applicant or Jennifer, she is on behalf, on behalf of the applicant to give us a presentation.
Perfect. I just wasn't sure if Tim saw that and he wanted to reply. Thank you.
Okay, with that all, uh, out of the way, uh, Mr. Gil, would you please proceed?
Yes, thank you much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yeah, Tim, I'm just gonna ask to share the screen for the presentation here. Thank you much, um.
We can see your screen, Paul, and please go ahead.
Oh, just gonna rewind there a little bit. Okay, so the first item, uh, on the agenda for council for public hearing is conditional use application. C U thirty-four, twenty twenty-one. Uh, the application is to seeking a conditional use approval. Uh, for council from from council to allow a garden suite use on the subject property. The subject property, which is approximately one point seven zero acres, is located on the west side of Gertz Cove, north of Westman Drive. The property is currently developed with a residence and as well as a one, uh, detached accessory structure, as per the applicant submitted, uh, site plan. Uh, an image of the proposed garden suite has been submitted for council's attention as well. As well as a floor layout of the temporary dwelling that is proposed for this property. Uh, as well, part of the council's package is the applicant had presented, uh, supportive signatures of various neighbors surrounding the, uh, property. And this information has been included as part of the council package as well. As per, uh, definition of the R M S St. Clement's zoning by law, a garden city is a, is an additional temporary dwelling unit intended for the sole purpose of one or two adults who are elderly or other family members who require special care, uh, special healthcare and supervision. Uh, regulations for this use are set, uh, within section three point, uh, one, three of the zoning by law. The applicant has submitted a detailed letter of intent for council's attention in which the owners of this property are seeking the use of a garden suite for their elderly parents. And the, they addressed, uh, in this, uh, letter that they propose to meet all the required, uh, requirements for, uh, the garden suite, uh, conditions. Uh, in, in, sorry, all the required garden seat conditions except for the temporary foundation, which they will be used during screw-in piles in lieu of post and pad foundation. Foundations for garden seeds are listed in the zoning ballot to be placed on post and pad. However, uh, the Red River Plowing District from a follow-up with the municipality had received, uh, information, uh, from a memorandum of understanding that a screw-in pile foundation acceptable based on the product being fully removable and the foundation being fully removed. Therefore, uh, we have, we advise that no variance would be required to address this condition. A condition has been noted for council attention should council approve this application to address the foundation for the proposed garden suite. Uh, and any future updates and amendments to the zoning by law, this can be addressed at that time. Comment from, uh, received from Manitoba Conservation and Climate on this application has indicated no concerns with the application. Comments received from R M administration has noted, uh, comments to council's attention. Uh, one of these includes the, uh, direction, uh, of down sprouts and drainage, that they should be directed away from the neighboring property to the north. Currently, the accessory, uh, sorry, the proposed garden suite is, uh, expected to be twenty-nine feet approximately away from the note property to a north. And, uh, administration, uh, from their comments that indicated that any sprouts would be directed away. Uh, as well, administrated, uh, administration wants a note. Council may want to consider if connection to a municipal sewer system should be, uh, condition of the approval on this application. In terms of the requested use, uh, the Red River Plowing District has no concerns. And the location of the size of the garden seed presented in this application would meet the accessory building requirements of the zoning by law. Should council approve this application, we recommend the following conditions for council's attention. Number one, that the conditional use approval be limited to allow a garden suite use as proposed with this application. Any further changes, additions may require a new conditional use approval. Number two, apple owner obtains all required permits from the Red River Planning District for the garden suite use as proposed in this application. The applicant owner to address at the building permit stage, building, building permit review stage, that down sprouts are directed away from the neighboring property to the north. Number three, apple owner complies with all other requirement, all other required conditions of section three point one, three, the garden suite. Of the R M of St. St. Clement's zoning by law number four zero six six, and the temporary foundation of the garden will be, will be allowed as a screw-in pile foundation. As per the R M of St. Andrews memorandum of understanding dated November tenth, twenty twenty-one. And that is all I have for this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Paul. Can I have the screen back, please? Counsel, do you have any, uh, questions for, uh, Mr. Gil? Okay, that's, that's quick hearing and seeing none. Uh, Jennifer Lynn, I believe you're going to, uh, speak in, in, uh, for the applicants. So if you would please, uh, like to do your presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, so thank you, Mr. Chair, honorable council members and administration for the opportunity to present today. Thank you, Mr. Gil, for your presentation. It was very well done. And, um, for those who don't know me, my name is Jennifer Lim. I'm from thirty-one Lakebourne Drive in Winnipeg. And I'm presenting in support of this conditional use application. I would like to take a brief moment to first tell you a little bit about myself. Some of you know me, some of you don't. So for those who don't know me, I grew up in St. Andrews and I lived for the first twenty-six years of my life in Ward Four. Um, I hold a Masters of Landscape Architecture and my profession is as a land use planner. So I started my career with the Selkirkan District Planning Area Board in two thousand and two as their summer intern student and slowly worked my way up the ladder. Um, and became a community planner for all six member municipalities at some point while I was there over the seventeen years of my career in the public sector. Uh, then in twenty nineteen, I left the planning board and started my own private, um, consulting company. So I am now representing clients on a variety of land use matters such as this one here today. And I hold, uh, full membership as a registered professional planner in good standing with my professional association since about twenty fourteen. So next I want to take some time just to quickly intro- uh, introduce the Gees bricks. Um, on the left-hand side here, screen is Brian and Hilda Geesbrick. They are the owners of Two Gertz Cove. Uh, Brian and Hilda, um, Brian had served in the Canadian Armed Forces, Princess Patricia's Canadian Light Infantry. Uh, and then upon leaving the military, he took on a career in law enforcement. Hilda has been employed with Manitoba Justice for over twenty years. Their daughter, daughter Amanda just got married this past summer, and she's pictured in the middle with her husband Brett. Uh, Amanda is a social worker, and their son Ryan is pictured on the right-hand side, and he is a paramedic. Uh, these are their three dogs. So this is L, Finn, and Rain. And now Hilda is the Assistant Director of the Fostering for Spirit of Hope Dog Rescue, where she's been volunteer for the past four years. And so they love spending time in the outdoors with their, their three pets. Um, the matriarch of the family is Joan, and she's standing in between Brett, Amanda's husband, and her grandson Ryan. Now Joan has resided in Dauph in Manitoba over thirty years and has lived alone since the passing of her husband Ed in twenty nineteen. So Joan stays active gardening and volunteering in her spare time. However, like many elderly parents, uh, she's at the point of needing assistance. Uh, Joan has mobility issues and suffers from severe diabetes, so the family wants to keep her close. This is Two Gertz Cove. The Gees bricks moved to this location in August of twenty twenty-one after residing in Winnipeg for twenty years. The property contains a single-family dwelling and a, with an attached garage and an accessory building in the rear of the yard, just like Mr. Gil presented. And Joan wants to maintain some of her independence, so the family is seeking council's approval to place a tiny home for Joan, roughly two hundred square feet in unit area. And placed on the ground screw anchors that Mr. Gil mentioned, so that they can be easily removed when Joan no longer needs the tiny home. The rendering, uh, shown is a virtual mock-up and doesn't reflect the surrounding context. The layout, uh, here is just a typical one, standard one for this type of a tiny home. And so they have a common area uh, that is used for, uh, dining, food preparation, um, and a three-piece bathroom area that has a hot water tank. And then, of course, the bathroom area. Now, this is the general location in the backyard where the, the tiny homes can be placed. So it'll be just past this tree here, more or less in this area. And I did a very crude Photoshop mock-up of it in hopes that it could give some sort of a sense of where it's going to be placed. It's not exact, so don't hold me to it. But we did provide a site plan, and this should be fairly accurate for where they're going to place it on the property. So you can see that they have, uh, twenty-six feet, I believe it is, uh, clear of any eaves or projections from the, the stairs that are coming off the tiny home to anything that's attached to the house. Um, now Brian did go around to the area neighbors, as mentioned, uh, just to discuss the plan and see what their thoughts were, if they had any questions or concerns. And then also to ask if they would give their written support. So, um, just because the letters contain names and signatures, we don't really feel that it's our, our place to provide them online. Uh, that's privacy information, but Lisa and, uh, Mr. Gil as well, they, they both got copies. And I understand that Lisa's provided council a copy with all that information, just showing that the property owners at one, three, and four gurts, which are all the surrounding properties there, do provide their support, as well as fourteen and sixteen Westman Drive and fifty-three eighty-three Highway number nine. So in summary, the Gees bricks are seeking council's approval for a garden suite for their beloved mother, uh, to be placed on their property so they can care for her in her later years. We hope that our proposal will meet with your approval. And it concludes my presentation. So if there's any questions, I'm glad to take them at this time. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Can I have the screen back, please?
Yes, I'll give that back just one second while I figure that out.
All right, counsel, do you have any questions for, uh, Ms. Lynn? Uh, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, hi, Jennifer. Um, there's been no mention of, except, um, how is this, the granny suite going to be serviced?
Okay, so my understanding is that when the sewer lines are in the area, the municipality will want them to connect it and have their own, um, separate servicing line for the, the tiny home. Um, so the Gees bricks are not opposed to that at all. Uh, they do have plans to tie in when it's available, but they are seeking a bit of time for that to happen because with the costs of bringing their mother in, um, they're hoping that they can use a, a holding tank system in the meantime. They also did have discussions with administration, just to note that there'll be really minimal water use. I mean, there's going to be potentially the composting toilet, but there will be, uh, two sinks, and for the meantime, they'll tie into the holding, uh, into like a holding tank type of system. The, uh, the house itself, I do believe, is serviced with a septic field, and I'll just, uh, maybe ask if Mr. Geesbrick could please confirm that because for some reason, I'm, I'm just blanking on, on, uh, the exact details, but I do know they're not opposed to tying in. They just want to have some time to be able to afford the costs.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any further comments or questions by counsel? Uh, Counsel Prechen.
Yeah, maybe, uh, Paul can confirm this. I guess the issue we've had in the past and, and how do we? How do we determine that once the, the the room or the house is no longer needed, how do we determine when that is going to be removed, if it's properly removed? Because we've had this discussion come to council a number of times where people are adding pods and sweets to their property for temporary use. And guess what? Thirty years go by and they're still sitting on properties. There's a number of them in the R M already with, uh, people complaining that they're still set up in the backyard, and then they turn into storage sheds and, uh, you know, all kinds of other things. So how do we ensure, Paul, and that once this is approved and passed, that it's not going to sit there for another fifty or seventy years?
To go. That is a, that's a very good question. Um, currently in our bylaw, we do have a clause that, uh, within the bylaw that says that when the use is no longer needed, it should be removed within six months upon succession. Uh, as far as enforcement, I guess it's, it's, it is a matter of, you know, of the applicants doing their due diligence of, of ensuring that is taking place. In the past, we've also had, uh, you know, when they come in for future permits, we do check, uh, to see when we have other, as, as, as a guide from our bylaw enforcement. But other than the fact that bylaw has its clause, it's really on the applicant owners to ensure that, that it's been taken care of. Um, we have in the past, uh, in some applications I noticed where we put a timeline on the use, where that, that would, that is a way of flagging the use, but, uh, that is also, again, it's all, uh, the willingness of the applicant to come forward. So right now I don't have any mechanism other than, uh, whether it's in the bylaw right now.
Mr. Chair, would you mind if I address the question at all?
Sure, go ahead, please.
Thank you so much for your time. Okay, so, um, in speaking with the Gees bricks, their plan is that when no longer, it's no longer needed, and they, they don't know if it'll be, you know, a short timeframe or, or much longer. They're hoping for longer, of course, but when it's not needed, their plan is to resell the tiny home. They know that the tiny homes have very good resale value overall. They have no intention of keeping it on the property, and they will abide by what the bylaw says. Um, I mean, I would expect most residents to have that, that, um, you know, ethical drive, but given their backgrounds and their employment history, I feel quite confident that the Gees bricks will do exactly as they've promised to do. And I would, uh, strongly hope that this council doesn't place a timeline on them because that's just more costs and bringing them back to council for, um, a reason that's, that's. If you're going to grant a conditional use, you either grant it or you grant a temporary use, and a temporary use is done to a timeline. So in terms of the application of putting a timeline on conditional use, it's, it's questionable if, um, that's really a, a proper practice. Um, so we're asking for a conditional use approval to be granted until it's no longer needed, and they will remove it once it's no longer used within six months. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. Is there any further, uh, further questions? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Uh, thank you, Ms. Lynn, and we'll move on to the next, uh, variation order. Uh, variation order number, uh, one twelve, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Mr. Gil, could you please proceed? I have your screen. You're good to go.
Am I coming in clear, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, you are.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, yes, the next item is variation one twelve, twenty twenty-one, located on twenty-eight Maple Drive. This variance application is seeking to increase the maximum compliant combined floor area, uh, from twelve hundred to thirteen seventy-six square feet for, for, uh, in order to construct, uh, a five hundred and seventy-six square foot, uh, storage shed on the subject property. Uh, currently, uh, the subject property is developed with a residence, a pool house, a, a detached garage, and an existing storage shed. Uh, the applicants are proposing to construct a new shed and remove two existing buildings. Uh, council may want to note, note that there are, is a permanent place to remove the buildings. And as a condition, uh, the applicant should obtain a final inspection for the rule of these structures. Uh, if council choose to approve this application. Uh, the new storage shed is a slight modification to the maximum allowable combined floor area of four hundred square feet. And our office has no concerns with the location of the required shed, uh, provided by the applicant. If approved, condition number two has been included for council attention to obtain all required permits from our Red River Plowing Office. And condition number four has been included to address the use of the accessory building. Should council approve this variant, variance request, we recommend the following conditions be added. Number one, this variance is limited to, uh, a total combined floor area of thirteen seventy-six or square feet maximum for all accessory buildings on the subject property as presented in this variance application and submitted proposed type plan. Any changes in use, replacement, or further additions may require a new variance approval. Number two, apple owner owner obtains all required permits for a proposed, for a new proposed accessory building from the Red River Plowing District Office. Number three, apple owner to obtain final inspection approval of the Red River Plowing District for the removal of the existing hundred and one, one hundred and forty-four square foot pool house building and three hundred eighty-four square existing, three hundred eighty-four, three hundred eighty-four square feet existing storage shed. The proposed accessory building is to be used for personal use only and not to be used as habitable space. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Paul. Uh, counsel, uh, Tim, uh, you have your hand up.
Uh, we should bring, uh, Wes into the meeting from the waiting room.
Yeah, should have been in for the, uh, for Paul's thing, but, okay, yeah, bring him in, please. Uh, let us know when he's there.
Wes is in the meeting. Wes, can you, uh, can you hear us?
Uh, I can hear you, yeah. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Gil has given his, uh, presentation, and now I'm going to open the floor to questions for counsel, uh, for Mr. Gil. Is there any questions for the planner? Okay, oh, uh, go ahead, Deputy Mayor Hoby.
Yeah, thank you. Um, thank you, Mr. Gil. I, I just, so just to clarify, um, with this additional shed, it would be five units on the property, but they're going to re- remove two, correct? So then we'll be down to the pool house. No, it would be four, actually. No, um, so they'll have the house, the, the, the current, uh, secondary garage, the pool house. A shed is what they currently have, I believe, and then they're adding a new shed but removing two?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Mister Gil, uh, Mister Gil will respond, please.
Yes, uh, Madam, uh, yes, Madam Counselor, uh, so what is, what is going to be left as accessory building is this proposed five hundred and seventy-six square foot shed plus a garage. The pool house and the existing shed is going to be removed. So we're down to only two accessory buildings and one home, uh, as per the site plan that was submitted.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Counsel, will have any other questions for the planner? Hearing and seeing none, uh, I'd like to, uh, with the, the applicant to like to speak to the, his application.
Uh, yeah, I just, uh, appreciate your guys' time taking, uh, concern with the matter, and, uh, those, those buildings are gone right now. We had to, uh, we had to remove them, so.
Okay, is there anything further you want to add?
Uh, no, thanks.
Okay, counsel, uh, counsel, do you have any questions for Mr. Johnson? Okay, I don't hear anyone. Uh, thank you very much, Mr. Johnson, for your application, and we will consider it shortly after we're done. And we'll, let's move on to the next, uh, next one. Variation order number twenty twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one, or one, pardon me, one twenty-one dash twenty twenty-one. Please go ahead, Mr. Gil.
Thank you much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, yes, the next, uh, public hearing item is variation one twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, located on nine forty-one Colston Road. Uh, this variance orders to reduce the required site area from eighty acres to six point four acres for proposal one within the agricultural general zone. The requested variance is part of a condition of a conditionally approved subdivision app- application file number S twenty-one, twenty-nine, oh, eight. Subject property located on the north side of Colston Road, uh, west of Quarry Ridge Road, uh, is a farm property. And the applicant, uh, has, uh, seek to remove the, uh, yard site, uh, and as a part of the proposal lot. And, uh, in order, in order to do so, uh, there was a condition that was required, uh, as the applicant didn't meet the, the development plan, uh, requirements. And this condition is part of the conditions, uh, uh, as late, as slated in the occasional approval letter. Uh, in order to do, uh, with council approval, this will allow the applicant to complete condition number three. We have no concerns of council granting approval with this application. Should this application be approved, the variance rules for site area of proposal one, one, as provided within this application. Any further changes would require new variance approval, and that is all I have for this one, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gil. Uh, counsel, do you have any questions from Mr. Gil? Oh, before that, Tim, do you have, uh, Jesse Anderson in, in the meeting?
Yes, I do.
Mr. Anderson, can you hear us? Jesse?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, all right. Uh, we're gonna ask the planner for, um, uh, if there's any questions from counsel. Counsel, any questions? Hearing and seeing none, okay, uh, then we'll, uh, Mr. Anderson, would you, uh, would like to speak to your application?
Well, no, it was pretty much covered during the presentation. Like, the only difference was there was a miscommunication at the beginning. It's my family's land. I'm not a third party in a sense. I'm just buying it from my grandparents to have the homestead and live there. Other than that, everything else has been met as far as I am concerned. Everything else has been met as far as I am concerned.
Okay, council, do you have any questions uh for the applicant? Hearing and seeing none, thank you, and we'll we'll move on to we'll move on to the next one. Subdivision number S twenty one dash twenty nine twenty five, Mister Gil, please proceed. Oh, Tim, are you gonna?
I'll bring the uh the um applicant in. Uh I believe it's the uh the owner. Let's just see here. So I'm just checking for the phone number here. They're in the meeting.
Okay, then we can uh we can proceed, Mister Gil.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh the first uh public hearing for the subdivision application is S twenty one twenty nine twenty five. And the application is seeking to subdivide the property at one eighty six Donald Road. Uh from uh to create three lots of three acres roughly in size fronting on Donald Road. Uh the property located on the west side of the current rail line, uh again, south of Donald Road. Uh is seeking to be divided to three lots. It is in the agricultural restricted zone. Uh and is also designated agriculture restricted in the development plan where current policies require lots to be four acres in size. Uh as the proposed subdivision did not meet the required minimum area for uh lot sizes. Our office uh from a policy perspective had to recommend not to approve the subdivision. Um should the applicant uh reduce the number of lots to two lots, uh it would uh would meet the minimum four acre requirement. The development plan as well as the current zoning by law. Uh comments received from uh Manitoba Agriculture also expressed concerns uh with with this application. Uh and they had uh from agriculture uh comments, they also had recommended that only one additional parcel be created. Comments received from Manitoba Conservation and Climate for council attention is that the applicant uh is is that is that this provincial department requests that approvals. And requirements related to drainage licensing be obtained and satisfy all required approvals from the Manitoba Conservation and Climate Drainage and Water Licensing Department. Uh comments from Manitoba Conservation and Climate indicate that new lots would be limited to holding tank only and that they would not be allowed to have any fields on this properties. Uh the subject uh property is also along the rail right away, and we did reach out to Canadian Pacific Rail for any comments. And they had recommended that the guidelines for rail safety be followed, uh as in their past correspondence were any development along. Uh a rail line or rail lightways. Uh and should council uh. Should council approve it, there has been a condition noted for council's attention, uh which can be addressed as part of the as part of the development agreement. Uh administration has provided comments uh from uh as listed in conditions one to three of this report related to taxes, development levies, grading plans. Development agreement requirements and the drainage easement requirements uh for council's attention. Uh aside from Manitoba Agricultural and Resource uh Development, there were no other concerns. Uh and there is a easement requirements for Manitoba Hydro and a condition has been noted for council's attention. Uh council, we just want to note that uh on the surveyor, uh the on the lot one, uh the southwest corner of the property. Uh it was a minor angle correction from submitted SAM. Uh if it is actually eighty nine degrees, fifty nine minutes and thirty seconds from ninety ninety degrees. So slight modification. Uh the updated SAM was provided to our office as reflected on the uh application, sorry, subdivision application map shown here. Um again, based on our analysis, uh uh our office recommends not to approve the application as presented. However, uh would would recommend approval if council decides to reduce the number of proposed laws from three to two. And the subdivision application map be revised to meet the minimum requirement uh for site area. Should council approve the application as presented, we recommend the following conditions for council's attention. And Mister Chairman, if that's okay, I can read the conditions right now.
Uh please proceed.
Yes, so number one, uh the applicant owner submits confirmation in writing from the municipality stating that. One A, taxes on lands to be subdivided for the current year plus any arrears have been paid or arrangements satisfactory to council have been made. Number one B, payment of any capital development levies have been made. And one C, payment of the administrative fee and service deposit required as per by law number one. By law number four one six five for preparation of the development agreement and related chain charges if applicable. Number two, applicant enters into a development agreement with a municipality to address items including but not limited to two A. An engineer lot grade. And drainage plan to be approved by the RM. Two B, new lots to be serviced by a holding tank only. And two C, any other standards deemed necessary by the municipality. Condition number three, applicant owner entered into a development, sorry, entered into a drainage easement with the RM if required. Condition number four, applicant owner submits written confirmation from Manitoba Hydro that an easement agreement. Has been entered into with Manitoba Hydro with respect to existing and or future facilities associated with the subdivision and plan of easement. As required by the Real Property Act has been provided. Registration of this agreement would be included as a condition of the final certificate approval. Contact Manitoba Hydro at hcsc@hydro.mb.ca, twelve dash three sixty Portage Avenue, Winnipeg, Manitoba. R three C zero G eight. Uh condition number five, applicant owner. Submit confirmation from the Drainage and Water Licensing Branch of Manitoba. Sorry, the Drainage and Waters Licensing Branch of Manitoba Conservation and Climate. That the applicant has satisfied all requirements from that agency, which includes the approval of obtaining uh water rights license. To construct water control works. For more information, please contact Darren Nicklin, Senior Water Resource Officer. At darren dot Nicklin at gov dot m b dot C A or call two zero four five seven two seven two six five. Number six, uh applicant owner obtains all required variances. Please note, applicant to verify site area and dimensions or have this information submitted by the applicant. Manageable and surveyor. Number seven, applicant owner to address within a development agreement with the RM of St. Andrews, any guidelines related to railway safety for future. Development has been addressed. And that is all I have for this one, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mister Gil. I'll pick it up the screen back, please. Uh council, do you have any questions of Mister Gil? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Um Dennis Causeway in the meeting, Tim. Mister Causeway, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, uh would you like to speak to your application, please?
Yes, uh today I'm asking for a variance for the lot sizes, the substance from that we're proposing. As a backstory to the property, in nineteen eighty five, my father gifted me this property so I could build my home and be close to my parents. This property has been in the family for nearly seventy five years. Today, I'm doing the same thing, gifting property to each of my two sons so they can stay in St. Andrews where they grew up and raise their family. My wish is for council to pass the the variance so I can split it into three lots, one for myself and one for each of my sons.
Okay, uh council, do you have any questions from the applicant? Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, Mister Causeway, and we will move on to our last subdivision. Tim, can you? Sorry, go ahead, uh Mister Causeway.
I I put him back into the waiting room as we're finishing. Just one second, I'll bring him back in again.
Okay, I just I I thought maybe you had something yet to to say.
Sorry, uh yes, I'm my name is Michael and I just have a couple. Uh I'm the son of Dennis here, my father. And I just have a couple of things to add on this subdivision, if that's okay?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Uh so I've taken the liberty of going door to door to speak with nearby landowners and discuss this proposed subdivision. And of the people who I could reach for comment, the feedback was only overwhelmingly positive and it was unanimous that. Pretty much all the landowners in the area want to grow within the community. Um I've completed a great deal of research into this land and the rest of the agricultural restricted zone. And found that uh the three lot subdivision as proposed is the most optimal use for this land. As it still maintains the characteristics of the land use of the surrounding areas. If it were to be split into two. That's recommended rather than the three, it would be much more wasteful of the vacant land field there. Um I believe that's stated in four point uh. Four point two point twelve point two in the development pan- plan compliance there. Um it says the proposal must not be wasteful of land, so that's what I just wanna make sure that it if. If this were split into two lots that that they're recommending, it would be much more wasteful than three. Um that's pretty much all I have. If you have any other questions, uh feel free to ask.
Council, do you have any questions of second second applicant? There are none, so uh thank you, uh thank you for your presentation and we will move on to the last subdivision. Tim, are you getting the Stephenson's into the to the room, okay? Subdivision number S twenty one dash twenty nine twenty seven, if you could please proceed, Mister Gil.
Hello? Thank you, Mister.
Is that Mister Stephenson?
Yes, it is.
Okay, we were going to have the planner give his presentation, so if you could uh just hold tight and listen. Thank you.
Uh will I mute my?
Yeah, please, please mute, please mute your phone.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. Uh the last uh public hearing item is S twenty one two nine two seven and it's a subdivision located at five thirty three Meadowdale. Uh road. The subdivision application seeks to divide the property uh by creating a five acre. Uh red, sorry, five uh five acre proposed lot from the uh existing uh. Thirty seven point sorry, thirty nine point seven three acre property as well as uh as a result would it recreate a thirty four point seven three acre residual lot. The subdivision, again, located on the north side of Meadowdale Road is currently uh within the resource and agricultural develop uh designation, the development plan. Uh the property right here highlighted i- in uh in the end under the aerial is currently developed with. Um a residence and sheds, uh as well as some sheds in the residual area as well. Uh the applicant again is seeking to subdivide off uh the five acres, wh- which would be the residential property. And leave the remaining land uh as a residual lot. Um from the development plan uh perspective, as as well as only by that perspective, the subdivision did not meet the policies. Therefore, our office from a policy perspective was not able to recommend approval. Uh there is uh again uh. Land divisions of small or parcels uh which are non-agricultural or resource related shall be limited to a maximum one, but it's as per an eighty acre title. Currently, this is a thirty nine point seven three acre title. Comments from also received from Manitoba Agriculture and Resource Development has expressed concerns with the proposed subdivision. And from their received comments, they're indicating the applicant consider reconsider consolidating the residual lot with adjacent lands. However, this would require the willingness of the applicant and the adjacent property owners to be included part of this application. And they said if this is not possible, the provincial is is considering is is requesting that the proposed yard site be reduced to two acres. Council may want to consider if this should be addressed as a condition uh on the subdivision. Aside from the Manitoba Agricultural comments, uh comments from other agencies generally noted no concern. The applicant has provided a attached letter to council's attention of their intent uh to subdivide. Uh and this uh municipal administration has noted conditions for council approval and condition number one, and there will be easements required. Uh council may want to note that the residual lot currently does contain two accessory buildings that will not be in compliance with zoning by law under section three point two two. Of the zoning by law. And therefore, a condition has been noted if council chooses to approve this application to obtain all required approvals from the Red River Plowing District to address these existing sheds. And these are sheds that are located in the residual along the undeveloped road loan. Uh aside from that, uh council, uh again, we have recommended not to approve this application as presented. Uh should I read the Mister Chairman the uh conditions if council chooses to present uh approve?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Thank you very much. And should council approve this application as presented, we the following uh conditions are recommended to council. One, the applicant owner submits confirmation or writing from the business that from the municipality stating that. One A, taxes on the land to be subdivided for the current year and any arrears have been paid or arrangements satisfactory to council have been made. And one B, payment of any uh capital development levies have been made. Number two, applicant owner submits confer- submits written confirmation from Manitoba Hydro. That an easement agreement has been entered into with Manitoba Hydro with respect to existing and or future facilities associated with the subdivision. And a plan of easement as required by the real property act. Has been provided. Registration of this agreement would be included as a condition of the final certificate approval. Contact Manitoba Hydro at hcsc@hydro.mb.ca, twelve dash three sixty Portage Avenue, Winnipeg, Manitoba. R three C zero G eight. And number three, the applicant owner obtains all required variances, including addressing all of. All approvals for existing accessories, buildings on proposed lot to residual lot. And that is all I have for the fun, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Gil. Uh council, do you have any questions of the planner? I have one question, uh Mister Gil, the you're you're not recommended that recommending this subdivision purely on a policy basis. Is that I'm do I, am I correct in assuming that?
You you that is correct, Mister Chairman.
Okay, thank you very much. Any further questions or comments? If not, uh Mister Stephenson, would you like to speak to your application? Please go ahead.
No, I'd just like to thank everybody involved and uh I'll await your uh your decision.
And you send a council of any questions or comments? Um Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh yes, Mister Stephenson, I just wanna confirm. Um you said your land has many marsh areas with two holding natural water. It's expanded over the last ten years and the back ten acres is unaccept- inaccessible. Um so you do only have access from number nine highway, right? And nothing is would be developed in the back part?
Uh that's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, uh just one comment for council, I'm uh I'm well aware of this property. It's pretty tough ground and. As a farmer, I can say that it's a it doesn't meet the criteria for uh for farming it. It really is class four, class five soil. Uh there is a few drainage issues, but they can uh they can be addressed. Anything, anybody else have any comments? If not, uh thank you, Mister Stephenson, and we will uh let you know the outcome of our decisions.
And thank you all, council and chair and chairperson and planning board. Thank you all very much. Goodbye.
Thank you. Okay, that being the last of our public hearings, we'll we'll close the hearings. Be a resolve that council hereby close the public hearings on December fourteenth, the twenty twenty one planning applications. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Paul, seconded by Counselor Garvey, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. We will start with item three point six, resolution for decisional conditional use number thirty four dash twenty twenty one. Uh where's the owner applicant of tax roll number one, two, three, nine, six, has made application for conditional use number. Thirty four dash twenty twenty one from the for the premise described as lot seven block one, plan four, four, nine, eight, eight, nine. To Gertz Cove, Gold Gertz Cove. Now therefore be a resolve that that the conditional use application number thirty four dash twenty twenty one. Be hereby approved with the following conditions that were read by the planner. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, seconded by Madam Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Resolution for decision for conditional use numbers. Uh these, come on. Resolution for decision for variation order number one, twelve, twenty twenty one, and this is the this is the shed. Whereas uh we're as applicant owner of tax roll number four, four, one, one, two, zero, has made application for variation order number. One, one, two, dash twenty twenty one for the premise described as lot four, block four, plan. One thirty four, thirty six, twenty eight Maple Drive. For the purpose of building a an accessory building. Now therefore be resolved that the variation order number. One, twelve, twenty twenty one be hereby approved by council with the following conditions that were read by the planner. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, called the second by Counselor Garvey. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Okay, resolution for decision for a variation order number one, twenty one, twenty twenty one. Whereas applicant owner of tax roll number five, six, eight, five hundred has made application for. Whereas applicant owner of tax roll number five, six, eight, five hundred has made application for variation order number. One, twenty one dash twenty twenty one for the premise described as part southeast. Uh, southeast quarter, section thirty, six, range sixteen, four east of the principal ingredient. Nine forty one Closton Road. Now therefore be resolved that the variation order number twenty, one, twenty one, twenty twenty one be hereby approved by council with the following conditions that were read by the planner. Have a mover, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, seconded, Madam Mayor, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Okay. Resolution of decision for subdivision S twenty one dash twenty nine twenty five. Resolve that the proposed subdivision number S twenty one dash twenty nine twenty five be hereby approved with the following conditions that were read by the planner. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, seconded by Madam Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing, seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you. Okay, resolution for decision for subdivision number S twenty one, twenty nine, twenty seven. Resolve that the proposed subdivision number S twenty one dash twenty nine, twenty seven be hereby approved with the following conditions as read by the planner. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, seconded, Madam Mayor. Any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going, we are finished the planning part portion of this meeting. We are going to move to the adoption of the minutes, but before that, Madam Mayor, you would, you had uh. Wanted to read a statement.
Yes, thank you.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. A code of conduct complaint was filed against me in March of twenty twenty one in regard to my refusal to sign the eighty thousand COVID funding check. To the St. Andrews Community Club after payment was approved. Having thoroughly reviewed these report, I support the findings and the recommendations put forward by Mr. George Cuff Municipal Consultant. With respect to the rec center payment and findings in this report, I sincerely apologize to the residents, staff and members of council. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, we are uh, we'll uh, we'll take your statement under advisement and we will defer a discussion until. The next council meeting at the in the in camera session. Let's keep on moving on. Adoption of the minutes. Resolve that council adopt the November thirtieth, twenty twenty one council meeting minutes as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, seconded. Can I have a second or please? Counselor Garvey, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That's carried. All right, uh, bylaws and policy. Resolve that council adopt the COVID nineteen vaccination policy number ADM dash fifteen as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Deputy Mayor Holby moves that Madam Mayor seconds. Uh, are we good, discussion? Counselor Paul.
Yeah, I'd like to move an amended policy. And I circulated that or that was circulated to council yesterday.
Okay, uh, is that a, is that a motion that you're making? Before you do that, Counselor Paul, this will become a public document for for public view. You're okay with that?
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, are you going to make that motion then?
Yes, I make that motion.
Okay, do we have a second or? Counsel Pritchett, discussion on the amendments that Counselor Paul has sent out. Uh, Deputy Mayor Holby. Oh, actually, hold on, Counsel, uh, Counselor Paul moved, moved that, moved that, so he has the first right to speak. So Counselor Paul, please go ahead.
Sure, thank you. Just give me one second. Okay, so you all have that that document in front of you, so I. I made made some changes, uh, but I'll start by congratulating our RM staff for the rigorous efforts they've done, uh, they've gone through. Uh, throughout the pandemic to adapt and be flexible in order to protect each other and our residents. So the result of this excellent safety precaution, uh, that are the, sorry, the results of this is the excellent safety precautions that we have in place today. So fantastic job and keep up good work. So it it seems based on the the initial proposed policy that there's a desire to implement a documented policy for purposes of vaccinating employees for COVID nineteen. So the initially proposed policy seems focused on requiring all employees to be fully vaccinated and eliminating in-person visitation residence. Uh, unfortunately, this will not eliminate the potential spread of COVID nineteen. Uh, vaccinated or not, all people can contract and carry and spread COVID nineteen. Uh, also, I feel that eliminating the ability of residents to have in-person meetings is is unnecessary. Our residents pay for municipal services and deserve to have the ability if required to have in-person meetings. Our professional municipal staff have proven that they are able to implement and follow precautionary safety measures for themselves as well as residents and should continue to do so. As for mandating employees to get fully vaccinated or potentially lose their jobs. I feel this is not the message we should be sending to dedicated loyal employees and our residents who have seen us through the pandemic to date. So, uh, mandating employees to get fully vaccinated, lose their job is coercion and is wrong. Anyone on any level promoting this message needs to stop and seriously consider what they're asking someone to do. In Canada, getting vaccinated is a person's choice, not ours or anyone else's. It is my understanding that this is a direct violation of a person's rights under the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms. Uh, is discrimination under the Manitoba Human Rights Code. And violates the rights under the Personal Health Information Act. As far as I'm aware, there's no legislation or laws that have passed to date that remove these rights from any resident in Canada. Um, so if I can just move on here. I feel the proposed policy, um, the initially proposed policy promotes segregation. Uh, a form of bullying and coercion of employees and have passed since the message throughout our committee that we support these types of behaviors. Instead of trying to strongarm people, we should be concentrating on educating and encouraging employees and residents to help us continue to maintain a safe workplace and municipality without segregating a portion of the population. So now onto the amended policy that I'm proposing. Uh, this proposal removes mandating full vaccination. And instead encourages employees to educate themselves on vaccinations and natural immunity by talking to their medical professional and following their advice. This way employees can understand all information, get answers to their questions and freely make their own choice of being vaccinated or not. Um, the policy also permits uh residents uh to have in-person meetings in the rare occurrence that it is required. Uh, considering the existing precautions that are being taken in our municipal facilities. Um, sorry, uh, considering the existing precautions that are being taken in our municipal facilities have prevented the spread of COVID nineteen before vaccinations were available. And after. I think we're still able to do so. Even if we needed to retrofit a section of the council chambers with a plexiglass wall, which can be done relatively inexpensively, it is still better than cutting off a residence altogether. It keeps everyone safe. Finally, uh, the amended policy provides the following. A reduced risk of legal and financial liability as it does not violate any person's rights and freedoms. And maintains superior protection for employees and residents. It supports inclusivity for all. And inside of the policy, I had mentioned a section that if mandatory testing was uh was desired to be included. Then if that mandatory testing is included, then it provides enhanced protection for our employees and residents by reducing the timeframe for possible COVID nineteen transmission. So it's a bit of a summary that I have for that. Um, and that's all I have on that at the moment. Thanks.
Okay, my thank you, Counselor Paul. Counselor Pritchett, you second the motion. So before Madam Deputy Mayor Holby speaks, I'll give you the chance to speak.
Thanks, John. Uh, yeah, I agree with a lot of Daryl's points. I kind of wrote down some stuff too, a lot of it very, very much similar, but I will read it. Uh, I will acknowledge that I have read this policy a number of times. We've had some time to go through it. Uh, I've spent a lot of time doing researching, of course, uh, looking for data examples, case law, multiple options. How to deal with this and kind of bring it aboard. Um. We will vote on this today and we will obviously have some discussion here. Discussion has happened prior to this meeting and the other meeting, but. I would also ask that this vote be recorded for potential legal ramifications. Uh, also keep in mind that this is a proposed policy. This is not a law or a bylaw that we are passing into the policy. I feel the policy is totally in violation of provincial federal law, employment standards, union agreements, the Bill of Rights, several freedom sections. Um, no one on this council, no one employed by the RM staff.
Did we lost Matthew? You froze up on us, Matthew. Or am I freezing up?
No, you're good.
Am I there?
Yes, please continue.
Um, currently Manitoba hasn't been in the state of emergency since October. Uh, under other the provincial health orders from day one, all local governments, selected officials, um. Aren't required to provide any of that information. So we are excluded from those health orders. Before this is voted on, I'm also asking administration and I'm asking legal to provide us or me. Uh, with the act or with the legislation that has been passed or that has been changed or put into place that allows. You know, our personal information and health information to be revealed in public. That has yet to been found. I've spent weeks looking for that. And unless DJ or legal has something else they can bring to us, I would love to see it. I'm not opposed to vaccinations. I have many myself. However, my personal information is my private matter and is not to be discussed or. Put forward in the public, nor should any staff member, council member, contractors or firefighters or anyone in this province or country. If we are truly concerned about keeping people safe and feeling safe, then everyone needs to be treated fairly with compassion and with respect. And if we are going to test, then everyone needs to be tested daily. With with daily testing and social distancing, we can all work and be safe in any environment. I will not support discrimination, segregation, bullying or any division created. Remember vaccinated people or not vaccinated people can still carry the virus, pass the virus and spread the virus. And I last point that Daryl made that I've written down here is by keeping the public away from council chambers. Uh, based on their status, I don't agree with that at all. We've all been elected. And the taxpayers put us there to make decisions and they have the right to come there into that building to attend meetings and um. Again, I just really, really disagree with this. If we're going to do this and we are going to. Be safe about it, then we all need to be treated equally and safely and there's ways around doing that. So I thank you for your time. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, you, Counselor Pritchett. Deputy Mayor Holby, please go ahead.
Yeah, I have a lot of points. I'll try to keep it short and sweet. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that in the vaccination policy that we discussed at the last council meeting, there nobody, this RM has said anybody would lose their jobs. We in fact said that those people who choose not to uh get vaccinated for whatever reason, um, that they would have to be mandated to take testing. So there's no. Threat of job losses. So I'm not quite sure where that came into play. Uh, I also want to state that actually Manitoba isn't a state of emergency, I believe. They just called in the army and they're looking for at least thirty people to come in and help and the sixteen doctors on Sunday night agreed that we have failing healthcare in Manitoba now. So uh, it was on the national news today. Anybody can watch the news tonight and see that Manitoba is uh, has made the national headlines today. Um, we are a government office in Manitoba and if anybody's had the opportunity to read Selkirk's new policy that's coming in on December twenty second. It actually is stronger than the policy we have in play or have discussed to be what come in place last week. I also have human rights and my human rights say that I do not feel comfortable nor will I work in a public place with people who are unvaccinated. It's. I I, I think we have to look at the greater good of of most people and considering over eighty two percent of Manitowans have now been vaccinated. I think that is the the greater amount. And quite frankly, we have thirty four people right now in ICUs and Manitoba hospitals, thirty three of them are unvaccinated. So I'll leave that little statement for you to think about. We also have a responsibility to protect every person in our RM office, not just council members, not just public works, everybody who works in our office. We owe them. The respect of making sure they're as safe as they can be. Another thing, in having in-house meetings, we, um, it's actually was proven last week. On with multiple sources, you could easily look it up, that their concern now that plexi between people is not helping because it's actually keeping the aerosol spray within a confined space. Uh, you'd need a whole new air filtration uh filtration system in our office space as well. Our office, as we all know, is quite old. Um. And. I think, like I said, we should look at Selkirk has their policy coming in on December twenty second. It's a very good policy. It's strong. It protects everyone in their municipal offices and um. And I just can't imagine as a government office when every single other government office, federal, provincial and city. Has this has the policy that we had brought forward last week or the week before in in their public places. I. Would be shocked and aghast if we put something different than what our federal, city and provincial counterparts are doing. Um, and and again, my last comment is I will not work with unvaccinated people. Sorry, that's that's my choice and that's my human rights.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Holby. Uh, Counselor Garvey.
I mean, we've, we've been over this before. I think, uh, um, I think we made our points pretty clear the last meeting, but, um, I mean, I appreciate. The time and effort that, um, Counselor Poland or Counselor Pritchett put into this, but, um. You know, restaurants were proof of vaccination, so I'm not sure why we would be, um, bucking the overwhelming, um. Well, maybe trends the wrong word, but that's what I'll, I'll use here. Like, why are we trying to swim upstream? Uh, against the flow, you know, uh, I I think we're, I think we're doing, I I agree with Counselor Obie. I think we're doing what's right to protect. Uh, the majority based on the information we have, and I appreciate that there's differing views. But, um. I think this is the the correct way to be going about it. So I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Garvey. Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I agree with Deputy Mayor Hobie and Counselor Garvey. Um, eighty three percent of our region, the Intralake, are vaccinated. I know it's a contentious issue, but we have a responsibility to look after our staff, our residents, everybody in this RM. Um, so I will, um. It is a contentious issue, but I also, as Counselor Garvey said, this is put in, you need double vax wherever you go, and I suspect with this new variant. That it's going to increase to more places with more rules. And I, we have to follow provincial federal AMM sent us the template and, um. I will have difficulty supporting the amendment by Counselor Paul. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I I appreciate all the work that Counselor Paul and Counselor Pritchett that you have put into this. Um, I look at this as, um, as a, as a policy put forward by AMM. It was brought forward by by our administration. And I have to support, I have to support our administration and the and the vetting that AMM has put into this as well. So. I I think that's, that's all I'll say. This is a, this is a very divisive, um. Uh, and controversial subject to be dealing with and I don't want to belabor it anymore. I think we know what everybody's view is. Uh, so I will call, I will call the question. Counselor Pritchett has asked that this vote on this amendment be a recorded vote. So we can do that and that saying that, I'll call the question, all in favor of the amendment? All those opposed. I declare that defeated. So now we are back to the resolution that council adopt the COVID nineteen vaccination policy ADM fifteen as presented. We have all expressed our views and I will call the question. All in favor of the of the COVID nineteen vaccination policy as presented. We've Counselor Paul.
Yeah, I had my hand up before the question. I have a comment to make.
Okay, make a quick comment, please.
Sure. So if we can provide. The legislation and law that allows us to. Violate people's human rights under the code, as well as the Canadian Charter of Rights and Freedoms, as well as. The public, the Personal Health Information Act. I think we need that information prior to being able to vote on any decision. Because it's important for us to understand exactly what we're voting on. If I don't know if it's legal what we're voting on, then I can't vote on it and neither should anybody at the table.
Thank you, Counselor Paul. Deputy Mayor Holby.
Well, I would say that the Prime Minister of Canada was able to implement these exact same rules. For the federal government workers. I'm pretty sure his lawyers are probably pretty well versed in this and I can't imagine. Them at a federal level making such a huge decision without having legal representation.
Is that why the Privacy Commissioner right now is investigating whether or not he can do it? So all I'm asking for is if it's there, then just show it to us.
That's let's let's not belabor this issue anymore. It was accepted by many many councils across. Across the province and I understand that your disdain with this Counselor Price or Counselor Paul, but that's that is your wish. And that being said, I will call the question. All in favor of the COVID vaccination policy as presented. Those opposed. That is carried.
Mister Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I was wondering. If I could do this now, or I should have done it, to entertain a motion to approve the policy now as we just did. But could I put forward a motion to ask this policy be redrafted and brought back? To the January eleventh twenty-second meeting to mirror the Selkirk policy, but as long as this is. Today, we have this approved to cover us like effective immediately. Or could we redraft the policy to mirror Selkirk?
No, what we we have voted on the on the policy as presented and that was and that was carried. If we want to, if we want to. Change the policy at a future date, we can. Today it is, today it is as voted and carried as presented.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll discuss with admin for the next meeting. Thank you.
Yes. Okay, item five point two, policy number E V D dash zero six, wastewater connection for new development policy. Whereas the policy has been drafted to guide wastewater connection related to new development in the serviced area. Whereas council agrees with the intent and guidelines outlined in this in the policy. And where the policy has had a legal review. Now therefore be resolved that the real municipal of St Andrews adopt the wastewater connections. For new development policy number E V D dash zero six. Can I have a mover, please? Have a mover, please. Move by Counselor Garvey, seconder. Second call for a second for a seconder. Last call for a seconder. That motion does not does not come come to the table at this point then. Move on. Bylaw number forty-one, six, five subdivision administration fee amend amend to schedule A. Whereas bylaw number forty-one, six, five is a bylaw for the purpose of establishing charges for administration. And service deposit fees related to subdivisions, land sales and land transfers in Yarmouth St Andrews. Whereas section two of said bylaw provides an amendment to schedule A. By the resolution of council, now therefore be resolved that council of the rural municipalities and Andrews approve the revised schedule A. Of bylaw number forty-one, six, five as attached. Can I have a mover, please? Move by Madam Mayor, seconder. Second by Deputy Mayor Hobie. Any discussion? Madam Mayor.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to thank our economic development officer for all the work done on this and for. Reducing the service deposit. I just have a question on schedule A, number two, engineer review. Subdivision applications may be reviewed by the municipal engineer prior to council consideration. And then it goes on. I'd like to, I think Counselor Prion, you brought this up a couple of years ago. Why do simple subdivisions require two engineers on a simple subdivision? That is, this is a huge additional cost to applicants, waste of time. And is there some way we can put in this policy when it's just a simple, straight, one to three subdivision? The same engineer can be used? Is this, oh, good.
Yeah, maybe Lisa, you could speak to that.
Um, yeah, I I think from. The the way it's written here subdivision applications may be reviewed. So we don't necessarily always require two engineers to review them. If it's a simple subdivision, it just because there's two lots, it doesn't make it simple. Sometimes there's creeks running through it. Drain adjustments, things like that. So we really try to use good discretion. Before we, you know, require a second engineer or municipal engineer to review them. So we do definitely not. Always charge and and. Send it to the municipal engineer to review. It's only if it's deemed to be required.
Oh, okay, thank you, because it was just the recent one. I was still dealing with the applicant on Cedar. And it just seemed like a duplication of cost on for both to come up with the same thing.
Well, then that's an interesting one because they didn't come up with the same thing, right? And that's one that that Public Works would like to be reviewed because there was some concerns with the way that it was designed. So it was initially looked at internally and then decided that it should go externally to be reviewed. So in that particular case, it was required.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good to hear because I, you know, I have received concerns about that. And then on schedule eight. To bylaw for one, six, five, number five, land transfer transactions. An administration fee for all other land transferred transactions is set at three hundred dollars. It covers internal administrative services. In addition to and shall be in addition to any technical, professional consultative or other service that may be required. So if it's just a simple, somebody just sells a lot off, are they required to pay this three hundred or what does that encompass? That three hundred dollars.
So this is just any kind of administration fee. So if we're taking the time to review land, sending it to our lawyer. And and you know, there's two different categories here. There's the sale of land and the land transfer transaction. It's really dependent on what exactly, you know, the transaction is and and both of these were written in, I think, two thousand and nine. Oh, at the moment, I can't, you know, specify exactly what case they would be used, but I certainly didn't want to eliminate it. Because there's always times when there's, you know, if it's a sale or a transfer of a right of way or something like that. So. There's always administrative costs. So this cost is to cover the administration for any agreements, for any legal. You know, input, any survey or input. And then the deposit as well for registrations. There's always some sort of costs associated with these transfers. They're typically minimal. But we do, we do take in administrative charges for those.
Okay, I would like to, for council, we'll consider to relook at this. Because I've always been like, okay, we have staff that are getting paid a wage. So then to do a job. So then this is over and above. To do the same job, basically, right?
It it depends. I can't, you know, make a blanket. You know, comment on that. Sometimes, you know, we we spend hours internally looking at stuff. And then there's other times where they have to be sent for further review or just some feedback or comments. So it's not a matter of just saying it's staff time.
Okay, see, because it because it's from two thousand and nine, I'm not familiar at all with what this would encompass. That's why my question.
Yeah, I just know from my perspective is that when we get, when we have a land transaction. Or, you know, a transfer for a right of way, there's there's significant costs and times and and. Involved in doing that.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Hobie.
Yeah, thank you. So I was really glad to see some of these adjustments as well and and thank you for for looking at this. And and making them maybe more in par. So like, I guess, kind of further to Mayor Sewell. So I'm guessing that like the five hundred would cover things like, you know, literally photocopying or maybe courier projects or stuff like that. Those are kind of incidentals that are over and above staff jobs, right? And I know, I mean, if you just think of any lawyer's office doing a transaction, you know, one courier, twenty-five dollars, it doesn't matter if they go downstairs. So. And I'm guessing those are kind of the incidentals that you're referring to that that kind of offsets that?
It can be, like, we don't have it necessarily itemized like that, but you, there are some instances where. If it's something minimal, I write the agreements or I take an agreement and I adjust from a template or something like that. Whereas the alternative is so that that five hundred dollars is can be partially for staff time because it's something that. Not necessarily the staff would do. So if we sent that same document to a lawyer, they would be charged a lot more to create that document.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? DJ.
Yeah, I just want to jump in a little bit. It's really about a. A bit of a user pay format, you know, so it's one way to look at it and just the person paying that that small fee, the three or five hundred dollar fee. But they are the person getting the benefit, you know, then ninety-nine percent of our residents will never do a subdivision. Or or a complicated complex program like that. So all these revenues we do take in on these type of services. Help lower the taxes for the rest of the municipality rather than incur more taxes, you know, so. That's that's the idea of a user pay principle on this a little bit and it just making those who request the service pay. Nobody's making them subdivide. That's. It's not what's being forced, you know, so that's that's the concept and it's fairly widespread through most municipalities that there's some type of administrative fee. But that's the logic behind it.
Okay, thank you, DJ, for clarifying clarifying that. Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. All right. Move down to bylaw number four, three, six, eight, municipal borrowing bylaw for twenty twenty-two first reading. Resolve that council get first reading to bylaw number four, three, six, eight, being the. Twenty twenty-two municipal borrowing bylaw as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Move by Madam Mayor, seconder. Deputy Mayor Hobie, any discussion? Hearing it, oh, Madam Mayor.
Sorry, I would just add for second and third reading at the bottom, we could have the three dates. Of first, second, and third reading added at the bottom. That's missing on this one. On on the bylaw itself.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything further? Any more discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Thank you. All right. Approval of accounts, December. December tenth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, check detail reports resolve the council approve the December tenth and thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Check detail reports as presented. Can I have a mover, please? Move by Counselor Garvey, seconder. Have a second, please. Counselor Price, any discussion? Deputy Mayor Hobie.
I just wanted to make a statement that I sent my questions into Mister Stammel and he sent me the answers. And I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything further? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. And those opposed. That is carried. Okay. Motion to bring back the October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one financial statement. We put this, we put this on the on the ta- on the table last meeting. And now we are going to bring it back for further discussion. Whereas October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one financial statements were tabled at the November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one meeting to allow further time to review. Therefore be it resolved that the October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one financial statements resolution be brought back to the floor. Can I have a mover, please? Move move by Madam Mayor, seconder, Counselor Price. We have it back on the floor. The financial statements were originally moved by Counselor Paul and seconded by Counselor Garvey. Is there any for, is there any discussion? Deputy Mayor Holby.
Yeah, and again, I just wanted to make it for the record that I sent some questions to Mister Stammel and he replied. And giving the answers that I was requesting. Thank you.
Counselor Price.
Uh, yeah, I I did write an email to Tim. I just didn't hit send to it yesterday, so that's why I didn't get it. But I see on the updated statement here, I guess I was just curious why there was this twenty-five thousand dollars added to the mayor's identity. And then moved out, like, why? How would that have been misplaced in there for? Relocating recycling costs. Because it shows that the mayor's identity was fifty-six thousand dollars.
It was, it was a coding error, which was which was corrected.
Okay. And any further discussion? Madam Mayor.
Yes. Price's comment. Where did you see my indemnities fifty-six thousand? I'm way under. Eleven thousand under budget.
Counselor Price.
This was in the attachment that was sent to us.
You're looking at the revenue and expense report of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-one?
General ledger, yeah, that was sent to us by administration. It shows total under mayor identity fifty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars. And eighty-seven cents. And then in light gray, it shows minus twenty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty-seven dollars. But then in the new one that's updated today, it shows that your total was thirty thousand, eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixteen cents.
And I believe Tim has given us clarification on that, that that was that that was a coding error.
Yeah, yeah, because it it just pops up as Zoom Waste Recreation. So I just didn't know what that was for, but. But the report today is is correct. So, thanks, Tim.
Okay, any further discussion, Madam Mayor?
Yes, correct me if I'm wrong, but Tim, were you not giving us a report on this? A summary, a brief on this today?
I have provided a report already. I do have some additional comments if council has time for them. I'll just very briefly touch on my comments. And it really, my comments focus on where we think we're gonna, where I think we're gonna be at year end and. Based on the expenditures so far to date and the revenue that we brought in to date. I'm anticipating that will be approximately eight hundred thousand plus for our surplus. This year and five hundred thousand of that is driven by the AMPA BEX. Closing down and the investment money that we got back from that for five hundred thousand. And then along with that. Most of the departments are showing that they're gonna either break. Equal their. Budgeted expending expenditure amount, or they're going to be below their budgeted expenditure amounts. Or they're going to be, um, below their, uh, budgeted spending, expenditure amounts, uh, creating a surplus. Uh, and the main, uh, uh, driver of that will be Public Works, uh, Public Works, uh, the roadworks, uh, for Public Works. Uh, uh, is below what was, uh, budgeted, uh, so that's going to be another large driver, so. Uh, I just wanted to share that, uh, with council, um, and, uh, and then if there is, uh, other questions afterwards, uh, please feel free to. Uh, to send them to me and I'll reply to you.
Madam Mayor and then Deputy Mayor Holby.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Um, I'm, I'm positive I put it in email. We've gotten so many copies, I apologize, but I'm really confused. Um, the five hundred thousand from the AMPA BEX can't, is not revenue, it has to be held. For five years in a separate account. The, the corporation hasn't even been dissolved yet. Uh, not that the board has heard, but that was one of the conditions that five hundred thousand be kept. In the event the province comes after us for more money. So that's not income.
So for financial purposes, we have to record it, uh, as revenue coming in, uh, and at year end, we can move it to a reserve. Uh, but, uh, from accounting perspective, we have to show it as income, and I've confirmed that with our auditors.
Oh, okay, thank you. And then just the one. Um. I've got the revenue and expense report to October thirty-first. On the gas tax reserve. One million, two hundred and eighty-four, do we actually have the cash in the bank from that? Um, because it shows remaining in the budget, zero.
We do have all the gas tax money coming in this year. Um, and, uh, we have received it, yes, we wouldn't be showing it as revenue unless we received it.
But I thought we couldn't get it, it was in trust until we filed. The audited financial statements, as per that letter from the province.
No, that was the previous year's audit that they were waiting for, and they did receive that, uh, and that triggered the release of the funds.
Okay, so we have that one million, two eighty-four cash in the bank right now.
Correct.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'll just correct that, uh, in the bank, we have one million, three hundred and eleven and change.
Oh, yes, you had emailed, there was something extra, I'm not a little bit, that extra. But I just want to share, but I just want to confirm about the gas tax money, that we have it physically cash in the bank.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Holby.
Yeah, um, so, um, Tim, I noticed you mentioned that, uh, it was Public Works, and I think part of the surplus at this point, is it not? For, um, most of the fire halls as well, we've got a little bit of surplus there too for year end.
We do, they're not the largest drivers, I, I was being, uh, just very conservative with my comments so that I could, uh, move the meeting along, so.
Okay, no worries, okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further comments? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. Those opposed, are you opposed, or, uh, Madam Mayor, you had an app was played, are you for or opposed?
Um, we'll be getting further reports, so. I will agree, I will, I'm in favor of this.
Okay, thank you.
But we will be getting another report by year's end. Well, this is year end, when do we expect the next report?
Um, this is a report to the end of October, um, so we still have two months of operations, uh, remaining in this year, so there will be. Uh, a year-end report, uh, and we'll follow, I'll follow the same process that we used last year. Uh, providing, uh, a similar, uh, summary with comments and explanations. Um, so there will be, uh, another one, uh, at, at year end, and it will also look at if there is. When we get to that point, surpluses that we do have, uh, like we did last year, we'll look at how we're going to allocate, uh, those surpluses. If you want to move some of them to reserve or, or leave them in general, uh, general income, so, uh, yes, there will be another report.
So we should be getting that in January?
Um, that depends on, uh, uh, the timing of when we get all the, uh, final costs in. Uh, I like to wait a little longer than January to do that. Um, that gives us time to do year-end adjustments, that gives us time for, you know, suppliers to send in their invoices, uh, by mail. Uh, for those that still send them by mail, so, um, I would say that it would not be in January, it would be later than in January.
Uh, February?
Um, yeah, possibly, yeah.
And sorry, Mr. Chair, one more question, what is the progress on the, uh, two thousand and twenty? Financial, for the audited financial statements?
Uh, the progress is very, uh, is very good, uh, we have a consultant, uh, uh, helping me, uh, to finish up. The, uh, the working papers for the auditor, and we are, uh, we've been in contact with the auditors, and, uh. Uh, they are ready to start, they've made time for us, and, uh, I expect that our, our files will be sent over, uh, very shortly.
Okay, so we get expected by next, by February, January, February?
The audit?
Yeah, and the auditor to come before council.
Um, tho- those requests would have to be placed, uh, to the auditor, uh, for their scheduling, for when they're available to come. Um, so I can't speak on their behalf. Um, uh, as far as, uh, the audit being completed, uh, again, that is somewhat contingent on their schedule as well, so. Um, it's my hope that it's done as soon as I send the information to them. Uh, but again, uh, we do have to, uh, take into consideration, uh, that, uh, um, you know, their, their schedules as well.
That's, uh, that's asked and answered, let's, uh, move on, we have, uh, Orville Curry in the, in the waiting room. And so I would make the suggestion that we skip over the, uh, the remaining part of the, um. Uh, agenda and move in camera and, uh, deal, deal with that, uh, first, Madam Mayor.
Yes, my apologies, you missed, um, item, you missed the approval of the counts, there was an addition. Uh, Tim had emailed us more checks that had to be approved.
I don't see.
The December thirteenth check detail report was.
We did them both at the same time.
I.
Resolution was to, to deal with them both.
Oh, okay, thank you, my apologies.
All right, let's move on then to, um, in camera. Tim, uh, as soon as we have done the resolution, we'll quit, stop the recording.
And we'll have to also, uh, ask Ken to, uh, pause the streaming.
Okay, resolve that council move in camera at six thirty-seven PM to discuss matters that are in preliminary stages. And respecting which discussion in public could prejudice the municipality's ability to carry out its activities or negotiation, as well as legal. And personal issues, and be further resolved that members of council agree to keep in confidence a matter. That is discussed at a meeting that is close to the public under subsection one, five, two, dash, three. And that the committee decides to keep confidential until the matter is discussed at a meeting. Of the council or committee conducted in public, can I have a mover please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, seconded by Counsel Pritchett, all in favor. And that is carried, we are in camera, so Tim, can you, uh?
We have the uh attachment to arm meeting is on in Lorette on the sixth of um January. There we go, resolve that who's going, who's going to be going to uh the arm meeting in Lorette. Councillor Garvey.
Councillor Hunt has indicated he would also attend.
Okay, and, and I would probably go to that one as well. Is anybody else going? Okay, resolve that councillors Hunt, Garvey and Proinbe authorized to attend the arm meeting which is being held on January sixth twenty twenty two in Lorette. Can have a mover please? Councillor Garvey moves, secondar. Not a mayor, seconds, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Okay, uh Byterra Curling Championships, January twenty fifth to thirtieth twenty twenty two in South York, request for sponsorship. They resolve that the Armistice and Andrew show their support to the South York Curling Club by sponsoring the Byterra Curling Championship. We love volunteers. Level in the amount of a thousand dollars out of other sponsorship recreation. Can I have a mover please? Moved by Deputy Mayor Holby, secondar. Councillor Pritchett, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Uh Red River Basin Commission Annual Conference. Bid res- bid resolve that councillor Hunt be authorized to attend the Red River Basin Commission Annual Conference which is being held January eleventh to thirteenth twenty two, twenty twenty two in Grand Forks. Can I have a mover please? Moved by Councillor Pritchett, secondar. Councillor Garvey, gain discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Correspondence for information, uh St Andrews Airport Inc., October thir- Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Correspondence for information, St. Andrews Airport Inc. October thirteenth twenty twenty one Board of Directors Meeting Minutes, you've all had a chance to look at them, is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none will move on. Uh tax sale proceedings, a final report. Any discussion? Comments, questions, okay? We'll move on then to old unfinished business. Uh, this is the motion to bring back water meters, low pressure, uh project report. Uh Ron is not with us anymore, so we will carry that over to the next, to the next uh meeting in January. Madam Mayor.
Yes, um, there is a deadline of this for January thirty first till the end of the year. Um.
For which one is that motion to uh the water meters look for low pressure system? Yeah, but we are gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna discuss it at the first meeting in January, which is, I believe, on the eleventh.
Okay, then perhaps admin could have let this uh closely or who we're dealing with to let them know. We're gonna be about two weeks late on the decision.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, new business, decision paper interim operating budget. Resolve that council of the RMAC Andrews in accordance with section one sixty three of the municipal act adopt the interim. Operating budget, budget to be effective only until such time as council adopts the twenty twenty two. Fiscal year budget now therefore be a result that the following interim operating budget be hereby approved. General Government Services six hundred thousand protective services five hundred thousand transportation services two point one million. Environmental Health Services three hundred thousand Public Health Welfare Services thirty thousand Environmental Development. Services forty thousand Economic Development Services a hundred thousand Recreation and Culture Services. Two hundred and twenty five thousand Fiscal Services one point five million for total of five point three nine five million dollars can have a mover please. Have a mover, uh moved by Madam Mayor, secondar. Any discussion? Madam Mayor.
Yes, I know this is standard operating done every year. Um, but under comments, what is the expected date? It's spanning authority from heard from January first twenty twenty two until the operating budget is passed. What is the expected date?
May fifteenth.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Okay, December twentieth twenty twenty one cow meeting cancellation. They resolve that the December twentieth twenty twenty one committee of the whole meeting be hereby counsel, can I have a mover please? Uh my counselor Darby move secondar. Another secondar please. Counselor Pritchett, seconds, discussion. Counselor, Counselor Paul.
Yeah, so we, we postponed the previous meeting and then uh when the following meeting came up, we had to push a. Push some things off because it was a jam packed meeting and it extended past the time. So is this gonna cause another issue over in January, we're gonna push a bunch of things over and then push it over again in January?
Well, I think there's a couple bottlenecks here, you know, one is certainly the capacity of council and other ones, the capacity of administration, so. You know, I really administration isn't going to be able to put together a good agenda for the twentieth, so yeah, we'll have to catch up in January, you know, like. Like I was going on that rhythm of having certain managers present presented every cow. I was trying to shorten that up with those um. Three by three reports, you know, the first one didn't go so well, but uh we'll get more in a rhythm and I think we'll be able to uh be just fine in the new year.
So do we need to have two committee of the whole meetings in January to be able to make up what we've missed?
I don't feel so, no, we can do it in one, Colleen's got her hand up, I don't know, Colleen.
Yeah, I just wanted to make a point as well at the committee of the whole, we cannot pass resolutions, so. Uh what we're putting off right now are resolutions that are. So just a point.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Okay, Woodlands, uh Memorial Woodlands of Manitoba. Be resolved that a letter of fro- from Memorial Woodland of Manitoba Inc. Be accepted as information at the arm of saying that that the arm include this type of. Use of land for consideration when preparing a new zoning bylaw in the future, have a mover please. Counselor Pritchett move secondar. Uh, Madam Mayor seconds, any discussion? Madam Mayor.
Yes, I just, I think it's an excellent idea and um I see it's put over for. Till next year, and I think councils should really look at this, I think it's a wonderful project.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing not all in favor. That is carried. Okay, uh that brings us to our light item, uh eleven point four. Tax adjustment for twenty twenty one resolve that council approve that twenty twenty one tax adjustments as listed below. NSF checks four hundred and fifty bucks, business tax six thousand four hundred and thirty two dollars. Property cleanup charges nine hundred and forty five dollars and one cent. Weed bill seven thousand five hundred and ninety four dollars and ninety five cents. Supplemental taxes as per assessment one hundred and eighty thousand dollars, one hundred and ninety two and ninety nine cents. And cancellation canceled taxes, including assessment and community groups. Forty three thousand five hundred and seventy forty five cents, can I have a mover please? Moved by Counselor Garvey, secondar. Secondar. Last call for this, this uh Madam Mayor seconds. Any discussion? Madam Mayor.
Yes, um brief, just brief breakdown, what are the council taxes, including assessment community groups? Forty three thousand five hundred and seven dollars. What is that encompassed?
Uh, Colleen.
What that is, is the list that we get from assessment for um any buildings that have heaven forbid. Uh fire reassessment years if values go down. Community groups, I believe that we forgive taxes on some of the community group owned lands. But I don't have an actual breakdown, but that's a general idea of what that figure is made up of. Ninety percent of it would be based on assessment.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Okay, uh appointment of chair and deputy chair. Whereas procedure by law number four, three, three, eight, section five, five A and B states out of. At or prior to the last meeting of the year, a resolution must be passed appointing the chair and deputy chair. Therefore be it resolved that Council Proing, John Proing be appointed as chair, Council Russ Garvey be appointed as deputy chair, can I have a mover please? Counselor Pritchett moves, secondar. Can I have a secondar please? Counselor Garvey seconds, any discussion?
Yes, could I have a recorded vote please, and I would also like to ask, when was this discussed with all the council?
This is in the procedures by law, I believe, Colleen.
Yeah, I, I, it is in the procedures by law and I just carried over what it was last year. I, I have no clue.
Any further discussion?
Uh, just recorded vote.
Just recorded votes, okay, all right. All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Garvey, I didn't see your vote.
Sorry, my screen went black for a minute, so I'm in favor.
Okay, thank you. And that is carried. So. Oh, uh, item eleven point six governance. Um, DJ.
Um, no, Madam Mayor put that on.
Oh, Madam Mayor, pardon me.
Yes, thank you, I had requested this um. As its council due to provide good governance. We had brief discussion before, but I would ask the chair for council comments to direct administration to draft a succession policy. If we don't have one for council consideration at the, I'm the next meeting in January. We're all aware CAO will be leaving next summer, uh or end of next summer. And I believe we need to make a decision. Do we start looking for an up for a new CAO? Do we have an interim CAO in place for next council? But we have to take this seriously and make some decision. Before the, you know, before DJ leaves.
Okay, does anybody have any comments on that, Matthew?
Uh, no, I thought DJ was putting together some plans and some stuff internally we discussed before, so I didn't think we were gonna. Be discussing that now, I thought that'd be discussed in the springtime, that's what I, that was my recollection from the last conversation, so. I guess the cat's out of the bag, but um, um, yeah, I thought that was the plan, so.
Counselor Paul.
Same comments as Matt, that's what I thought the plan was.
Uh Deputy Mayor Hobie.
Well, I mean, now that we're discussing it, um, you know, success bonding is always a good thing, it doesn't matter what business you're in, so um. I guess whatever administration um was going to put together, um, so I guess we're moving it up a couple of months, this wouldn't be till January anyway, so. Um, whatever they can bring forward to us, um, that'd be great.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor Hobie, Counselor uh Garvey.
Um. I agree with Counselor Pritchett, that was my understanding of where we were going, so.
Okay, thank you, and that was, that was my recollection of that discussion as as well, and we'll wait for uh administration to. Bring forward a plan when they're ready to do that, I believe. Okay, there are, uh, Council Pritchett.
Yeah, does the mayor have any recommendations or anything that? Well, I. What are you hoping to get out of this conversation, right, like what's the plan?
We have, that's our job for good governance and. I mean, we can't leave it till May, there's been nothing else provided to council, so I thought I would bring it up if there's comments. Because this council has to make a decision. And we, we, that's our job to provide good governments, governance, so that's why I asked for council comments. Um, cause CAOs are hard to come by and we have to make a decision how we wish to proceed.
Okay, I think your, everybody's comments are duly noted and uh we'll, we'll wait for. Uh administration to come back to us with a path forward, but I believe that uh that has, most of that has already been. Uh started, I believe, uh, Counselor Paul, and then we'll move on.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, I mean, uh, maybe DJ can give an update, I mean, we talked about this, I don't know, it was a couple of months ago and that was. The plan that we had proactively identified, so DJ, what was your? Um, I know you, you talked about the springtime, so. If we're talking about pulling it forward to January.
I just wanna say.
Capacity constraint would that cause us?
Yeah, like it's something we can debate again in camera, certainly in camera conversation, because it involves specific personalities, so. So we can rediscover the timeline in January, I think, um, I, I like collect the rest of our most accounts, so I thought. I thought we had already and we would revisit it in the spring, but we can talk about it uh and in January.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we've got two resolutions coming out of in camera discussions and I would like uh calling to please read the first one and we'll go through them. We've lost calling.
I'm here.
Okay. There you are.
I'm here. Whereas the motion performance race, a raceway has provided their community engagement report and the St. Andrews Airport Inc. supports the proposed plan. And feels it was operationally acceptable to the airport. Therefore be resolved after review and consideration, the airport board be instructed to terminate the lease agreement entered into. Between the airport board and four, 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 seven, five, seven, four Manitoba Limited. Owned and operated by motion performance raceway immediately.
Thank you, I can have a, can have a mover for that uh resolution. Move by Counselor Pritchett, secondar. Madam Mayor seconds, any further discussion? That Council Paul.
And the only comment I would make is uh in regards to the resolution, I think we need to add um or change the airport board to St. Andrews Airport Inc. Whatever the official name is of of that group. I think that would make it more official. That's all.
That, okay, good, that, that will be noted. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. Okay, uh, calling, there's the second resolution.
Thank you. Whereas Resolution twenty twenty one three sixty four was passed on September twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Closing the office from Sep- from December twenty fourth to the thirty first. A notification has been received from the International Union of Operating Engineers. That the stat day for January first must be observed on January third rather than December thirtieth as per the collective agreement. Therefore be it resolved, the municipal office will be closed on the following days with staff using vacation, bank or unpaid time. December twenty fourth to January third inclusive.
Can I move her please? Madam Mayor moves, Counselor Pritchett seconds, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor. That is carried. That has brought us to the end of our uh of our uh agenda. So I'll read the resolution to adjourn, resolve that council meeting be adjourned at nine oh seven PM, can I have a mover please? Counselor Pritchett moves, Counselor Garvey seconds, all in favor. That is carried, thank you very much, everybody have a, have a great rest.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody. Merry Christmas.